We'll call the planning board meeting. The board is meeting. We're roll call. Mary?
Yeah.
Peter.
Peter Ward.
Good morning, sir.
Phil Prick is here.
Chris is here.
Chris Solley, Laura Tenny.
Laura here.
Sarah has a conflict, so she is not. First is correspondence. I think we received two from Lorraine Yvani. I didn't have a chance to read the one from today. But we received one on Friday. As well as the one. Any others? All right, we'll go into our approval not required. We do, we're gonna reverse and do the 239 Summer Street first.
All right. Thank you, Chair. My name is Tom Sacks. I'm an engineer with Hancock Associates. I'll be representing Tom Dodge meeting in his request for an A and R. For you, you see, we have our A and R plan. We just highlighted it up a little bit for you all. In blue, you can see our proposed lot lines. We have one lot here to the north and then one lot here to the south. And what we're proposing to do is we're in green here is the existing lot line. And we're basically, this lot is non-conforming already. And the lot line is right next to the building. So we're requesting that we move the lot line to make it more of a conforming lot and give the property a little bit more of a yard space. Pretty cut and dry. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions from the board?
Is that the full intent, though, just to give yourself?
Yes, yes.
Space on the back of the building?
It's already an existing non-conforming lot, and we're just altering the lot lines so that there's some type of yard space.
No impact on the adjacent lot at all?
No, nope.
Is it non-conforming due to size and frontage?
Yep, size, we don't have much area. It's still non-conforming to area, but frontage is the other non-conforming factor. But we're not, we're not altering anything in this area. It's just the rear of the lot.
So no construction, no road realignment, no disturbance of any sort? Literally just changing the lot line?
Yep, they just have a common drive and that's it.
Anyone from the public here to speak on this A and R? Anyone from the board have other questions?
I'm assuming there's a house on both lots.
Yes, there's a large one in the back here on this lot. And then on this lot, you have the smaller one here. So you can see how the property line is right up against it.
Is there any?
Modifying the system.
You have a recommendation?
That you endorse the formate? If they're not affecting the frontage or access to the property.
This is the?
What was that?
The N A T, the district D.
I believe so.
We all move that we endorse the plans submitted by Hancock and Associates. Plan of land for the trustees of Anne Dodge Revocable Trust, the 239 Summer dated 1/22/25. And I note that the, the plan does state that the planning board endorsement does not certify compliance with the zoning by law.
Third second?
No move?
Second second.
It's already been, it's second, okay.
Excuse me, there is one, we did make one edit to the references in the deed book. So the new date of the plan is 2/6/25.
Oh, okay.
So we did have to add one reference from the deed book. That is the only change we have made.
Someone amended on?
I amended to the date of 2/26/25?
2/6/25.
2/6/25, sorry.
Okay.
Any discussion? So let's take a vote. Laura?
Yes.
Yes.
I vote yes.
I vote yes, according to?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Mark has updated my law, so.
I should get some updated, I should get some updated paper copies as well.
Of course, yep, I can do that. Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is the approval not required for T4 LLC 30 and 34 Pine. And I think that's the thing this year.
I'm not prepared to use any sources. I'm excited.
We just need to capture, you can sit, but we need to see it.
I can do this, I think I'll work. Yeah, of course.
These guys are Hancock. All right, I'll go quickly. But I thought I was pretty familiar with three lot, or four lot A and R plan. I became involved in the property because long ago and far away, I worked for Bill Hatchet, the landscaper. After he passed and his sister sold the house, she contacted, that's how I became involved in the 35th Street property, which is the Hatchet House. It had been my intention to keep the Hatchet House on the corner of Deer Hill and Pine Street, the big white one, and add two adjacent lots, four mais off to the side. But after the community, I always get this wrong, after the community.
How's the overlay district?
Yeah, the overlay district, thank you, got passed. It became clear that I could do up to 10 lots, because I also ended up buying the 35th Street lot.
10 lots?
10 lots?
10 units.
10 units, I thought that, yes. Because I had bought the adjacent property, 35th Street.
34th?
34th, oh, so 30, you're in 34th Pine Street. This plan was meant, that's before you, was meant to represent three formais, single-family on Pine Street, consistent with the existing look and feel of the place, and two duplexes under the community lot at Outback. But the reality is, I guess I'm short frontier, because I thought I could use the community prime slot, but I'm informed by Mark that it has to be the underlying zoning. So I'll have to bring this back to you with modification to bring this lot up to the zoning that exists in Residence A.
So you're requesting an extension, as your plan was filed on February 10th? And so your 21 days would expire on the 3rd of March? So are you requesting an extension of the time?
It sounds like he's withdrawing it on recent.
Oh, okay, is that what you'd like to do?
No, because I'm already here and because I only heard about this from Mark about eight minutes ago. I'd like to know how important you think maintaining that house is on the, like the house, three lots, four.
So can I, can I ask a couple of questions? I'm confused. All of those lots are in the future MBTA overlay district, hasn't been approved yet? So we can't assess, I mean, we can't assess under that, because it's not in our laws yet. And then? So all four of those lots are in there, so I'm, and, and what do you need on Deer Hill? 160 feet for frontage?
Well, you'll forgive me with no objection. I thought that had been approved.
So it's been approved by town meeting. It's awaiting the attorney general's and the state's approval as well. So seek approvals, but you can't get a building permit or anything under. So if these lots were approved, you still can't, let's say, pull a permit for a five-unit building. So, but the, the point is, is that you're trying to do this under the existing zoning.
I think that's correct, yes.
And the only thing is, is that the three lots along Pine Street conform with the existing zoning. The only issue is the frontage for the lot in the back.
Yes.
And so that's something, so are you, so then your question having to do with, so then your question having to do with, would we prefer that that house remain on the corner? Would that mean if you asked for variance or frontage?
That doesn't really?
You could retain that house?
It doesn't look like?
I know that doesn't really.
Relate to the application for the A and R. It only, we're only concerned with the frontage and the act.
Well, it's quite easy to modify this plan to reflect. What I didn't understand is the frontage requirement for them, but that it will require at least some considerable demolition on this. But apparently that's, this house adjacent, the adjacent house, 34 is, is coming down anyway, the prep. But I guess, which is different than what I had in mind.
So in terms of your course of action, would you like to withdraw what you filed? Or do you want to send and modify? Mark, what would you say?
It's up to the applicant, it can be done either way.
I, I think it's easiest thing is just to withdraw. Where you set on the house. Which is not what I thought you would want, because I'm thinking that the Pine Street corridor should look to the extent again like it does, but. These will all be available to be duplexed on.
Not under the new zoning, but the multi-family.
Well, it could be a two-family or a multi-family.
No, it's two, two families on a lot or one, three family.
He can build under our current zoning, which would be a two-family.
Only on lot two, not lot three.
And he wants, and he want?
Under our current zoning, you can only build a two-family if there's an existing structure. You can build a one-family on lot three on your existing lot.
But if the, if the, once the chart is finally approved and if a variation of this is approved and he chose to build two units on one of those, that is three or four, he could do that as long as the total didn't exceed the 10.
Now, now he's got new lots. If he doesn't, if he doesn't, if lot two and three remain one lot, then he can build two duplexes on one lot. But if they're separate lots.
What is that, Sarah, again, if lots two and three?
So the definition of the multi-family housing is either a three-family on one lot or two, two families. And so be under the chart, you have to do the multi-family. And so if lots two and three are separate, you can do a three-family on each one, but you can't do a two-family, because it's not a multi-family. If lots two and three are one lot, then you could do two, two families on that one lot. Under the chart.
And he can mix and match? He picks, he, he does, builds under current zoning or new zoning?
Correct.
On a whole different lot?
Well, it would be the lots that existed on November 18th of 2024.
Well, but you can't, you can't, I'm sorry, but you can't mix and match that criteria in the sense that if he wanted to build a two-family on a lot with an existing house and then a lot next to it, build five units, he could.
As long as they were the lots that existed on November 18th, yeah.
No, they don't, the exact lots don't have to exist, because otherwise we wouldn't be able to approve an A and R.
Well, help me understand this. I thought the original proposals that I bought would allow me to do 10 units under that. So my original proposal is one, two, three, and four out back, seven units. But now if I changed this such that this is a, you know, has frontage, then I don't know what I could do, two, four, six.
What is it again, two, four, six, and 10 more?
No, no, two, four, six, four, sorry. I, I don't think that's my intention, because I thought Pine Street is a neighborhood of single families. With a few exceptions, there's a couple of them. But I thought these should be single-family homes on Pine Street. And it's quite easy to pick two, two houses or incredibly four bungalows. From my intention, I guess, which was to come here and if you approve, is to take this back, pull it back from the agenda, try again with the different. Does that make sense? But I, I'd like to know that Olivia, understanding what is allowed.
Well, the only thing we're deciding today is the A and R that's before us. We can't really give you advice on what to change it to. I mean, you can meet with the planner, but we can't really give you advice on how to change your plan. I'm just dealing with the A and R.
Okay.
So what's the action plan then from now?
I'm gonna take this home. I'm gonna ask you all to let me withdraw it. I'm gonna bring it back likely as three formais and one lot behind that does have the requisite frontage. And you're gonna see it again as a formais without respect to any.
Great. Mark, do you think?
You should just vote to accept the withdrawal.
Any discussion on the proposed withdrawal?
Can I give a friendly suggestion?
Yes.
You might want to withdraw without prejudice.
Good idea.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the withdrawal?
Is there a town of Manchester hand up on the new?
Oh, there is a hand up. MBTS. MBTS?
I ask one more before you vote. Is there an expectation as to when the 3A will be included by?
They're nine, excuse me, the 90 days is, I sent you the date, Mary, the 11th, I think, of March. So we should hear on the 11th of March, unless they request that.
I don't think this formais plan predicated on anything like that. No, okay.
Can you tell me what formais mean?
Approval not required.
His, his? Exactly.
A and R, I'm sorry.
Oh, I got you, yeah, okay. I can't, did they put their hand down? Okay, all right.
Just, that's almost certainly gone off.
But I don't see their, that was down. Um, any other discussion amongst the board? We can't vote, um, Mary? Yes.
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 Voting to withdraw?
Yes, yeah. Thank you, I'm sorry.
Without prejudice.
Yes.
Without prejudice.
I'm sorry you had to come in, so I.
No, no, thank you. Get it covered, thanks.
All right, next up is the section of 206 Summer Street. We're not, this is not the hearing on the application for a special permit, but we did invite the representative of the applicant to come in. Because of the hosting issues, we can't have a special permit hearing until we're being invited on the site walk. With three of us were present with the representative and the owner. We invited the representative to come in and talk a little bit about the application. Without having the official hearing.
I thought we were just doing a discussion.
Oh, discussion, yes.
Yeah, so you guys, if you have any questions to pursue.
Oh, okay.
Any questions you may have from the site walk, I know only a few of us were there. But yeah, if you have any questions, please.
Could somebody give a quick overview, some of us couldn't make it?
So you went on the site walk?
Yes.
Oh.
So this is 206, 208 Summer Street lot. You want to just summarize what is, with very informed?
This is the board, Tom Sacks again, with Hancock Associates. So yep, we, last meeting, I was here for an A and R plan for 206, 208 Summer Street. During our site walk, we were focusing on the special permit application for earthwork. There's a few of those standards that we will, that are applying to our project. We're moving, you know, exceeding the cut fill for an area, there's a certain amount of cubic yards that will be moving on and off-site. So during our site walk, we basically just went through the plan together. We looked at locations where we are moving more soil, specifically around the septic, around the driveway, and around where the house proposed. Hard to describe the top of the plan, but everything that we're doing is catering around those three factors, the building, the driveway, and the septic. On-site, you remember, it was quite a steep driveway. Everything is to the town fire department standards for the driveway design. The septic, we did have a proposed retaining wall. Some people weren't paying the retaining wall, but it is necessary to get our separation of groundwater. And we, they was asked, well, why don't we move the septic? That site is a lot alleged, and that was the best testing results that we received on the site. So that's how you, that's just specific areas, we were pretty lucky to find that, so. And then just all the cut fill will be related to the driveway. So when I did the calculations, as you'll see in the memos, you'll see next week. Yeah, it's just, there's a lot of earthwork being done and that's it.
One question that did come up on the site walk was what materials you were planning to use for the retaining wall? And approximately how high the retaining wall would be?
Yeah, so.
And if I could just say, there wasn't an issue on the retaining wall, it's the materials they proposed to use.
Yeah, so the height's gonna vary along the driveway. It's a 15% slope, but then it grades down to an eight, then a 4% slope. So it's gonna be basically a wall that's gonna gradually get taller as you go down the driveway. Your max height is at 10 feet at the bottom of the driveway. The material we were suggesting was modular block. It was requested that we may look into boulder walls. The issue is we need separation between the septic field and the retaining wall. And with boulders, you start getting thicker and thicker walls. And then next thing you know, the boulder will be on top of the septic area, which we can't have. And that's constrained by the common driveway. So we were proposing modular block, recast concrete. I was gonna dig up some examples for our informal meeting together, and we can review those at that time.
What's the informal?
Is this the informal meeting?
No, we're scheduling something outside. Sarah proposed that we, because we got pushed in the cricket to March 10th meeting, that we do an informal meeting outside of Monday nights. And we just discuss any other issues that they had with the plan or any topics of concern.
I would suggest that all those happen at a public meeting, so all board members can hear what's going on. I think these one-off meetings are problematic.
I thought, I thought you were gonna bring us some examples, but tonight's.
I, I understood, I thought it was tonight.
I don't think Sarah meant that she would need individual hearing.
She meant specifically it wouldn't be a, a public hearing, it would be an informal.
Yeah, that's what tonight is.
That's what tonight was gonna be.
I was at the agenda this afternoon, because I would have, no one told me, but that's okay.
I'm sorry about that.
But it's something I could definitely forward over some type of law.
Yeah, if you, if you send some, some, some specifications, then I can forward it to the board.
Obviously, my client's gonna be the one building this, and I don't want to step outside what I think would work, but if it's outside, like, it, it's up to him in the end, so just go and run by him first. So are we allowed to discuss this thing? Are we allowed to talk about it at all?
I think we are, yes, because this is a, this is an open meeting, it's just not.
This is just a massive amount of earthwork, but it is, it is amazing. I followed all those grades around, and I said, holy moly.
So you will see on the plan that we were restricted by the 200 vernal pool buffer.
Which is sitting over here.
Yes, we originally submitted the plan through conservation, and we were just trying to see if we could have the driveway a little bit shorter, but they did not want any work inside the vernal pool outside of 3A. So all retaining walls, driveway, dwelling, that was all removed from those resource areas. So later on down the road, I came, we came to you, and we proposed the A and Rs, because we moved the building outside those resource areas. And yeah, there's, there's a lot of earthwork. It's just, you're, you're limited because of the driveway design of a 15% grade. And as you know, on-site, and as you know, Mark, it's very steep on-site. So you're never really catching the grade unless you're doing a cut, because the hill is exceeding, it's probably a two-to-one slope naturally.
Yeah, I was looking at the grades, I was amazed.
Yeah, yeah, so, but that was, we were trying to be as conservative as we could. Between the driveway and the common drive, you'll notice that it's gonna be all naturalized area. We're gonna do native species, gonna help with holding the, holding the side of the hill back. And that's, I think that's in our planting plan on the first sheet.
How far back from Summer Street will the septic will be?
I'd have to measure it out, but it's probably looking at about 300 feet. It's not, you, if you stick your head around the corner, you can see it. But if you're going by summer, by the property at 40 miles an hour on Summer Street, you're not.
Yeah, I drove by it 10 miles an hour.
Well, yeah, you let it go a little bit earlier.
It was a pretty impressive amount of construction going on.
Yes.
So is the drive and the, I'll call it the parking patio, if you will, are they pervious materials?
So the parking court is gonna be a pervious material. And then we proposed pervious patio in the back. We did not, we did, pervious favors are very high upkeep. So instead of doing that down the driveway, we proposed an infiltration trench along the sides. So it's pitched at a 2% slope into the side of the hill towards the infiltration trench. And that will just catch any type of runoff.
And the intent is to catch it, but have it infiltrate the soil, not, not drain it all the way down the block?
Exactly, yeah, you'll see, it's kind of hard to see on the plans, but there are check dams along the way. And it's to reduce any type of flow down the hill. We want to infiltrate, we got good soils for the septic, so we kind of pulled that information. Said, all right, soils are decent, so I think it was loamy sand, so it has a better infiltration rate.
And your septic field is all the way down at the base?
Yes, yeah.
So you're starting at elevation 87, and you'll be coming down to elevation? Now, what's it be coming down?
42.
Yeah, that's, you're, you're dropping fast, huh? What's your intent there?
For the storm.
Yeah, the septic field, how are you gonna get down to it?
So it can all be gravity, we're proposing a drop sewer manhole about halfway down.
Drop, straight down, and.
Yeah, straight down, usually it kinda cooks, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I was gonna say, there's no way you're gonna do it, gravity, it'll just.
No, it's significant drop.
Wow, okay, sorry, Sue, I just.
No, no, this is, this was supposed to be the point, so.
I was interested in how they got, the mechanics of how they were gonna do this. Pretty, pretty dramatic.
So you're building a plateau, and then behind this retaining wall, is that kinda what's happening?
Yeah, for the septic field, yeah, because you need the four-foot separation of groundwater. And redox or redoxymorphic features, so estimates you lie groundwater was relatively high. So from that, we had to build up four feet, and then you need your pipe and stone, p-stone, and then one foot of cover. So you can see how you really, it adds up, you know, you're probably looking at, uh, probably four feet of fill in that area.
So what was the issue with the retaining wall material? I think besides the, the boulders versus the, I think the appearance.
And the height, I mean, a ten-foot wall is, that's a really high wall.
That's the height of this room.
Towers, towers over anybody, yeah.
Sorry.
That's a true retaining wall.
Well, from an engineering standpoint, boulder walls really get wide, 'cause you're just stacking rocks. When it's a modular block, you have all these options, you can do geo-grade, you can tie it back a little bit. Um, gravity walls go up to twenty feet typically, it'd be probably a larger block. The face would be the same, it just goes deeper into the, into the side of the hill. But it, it wouldn't compare to like, if you're using a boulder wall, doing a boulder wall, and you're stacking rocks after a while, the thing is probably like eight feet thick.
Is there a fence along the top of it?
Um, we do not wanna have one proposed, I believe it. But we typically do, uh, request that there is some type of fencing along the top, fall protection, so. Yeah, that should be added, definitely.
That's gonna make it look even taller, though. I mean, I don't know if you could plant it, but get it put up, you could put a fence on top of a ten-foot wall.
Yeah, um, we could look into that, um, but I do see fall protection is one of our standards. We do recommend, especially when you start getting above four feet.
Has it ever looked at lowering the elevation of the garage and stepping the house down the hill at all, or?
So the driveway length is indicative of the hillside. So as I mentioned, at fifteen percent slope, we're trying to catch the hillside, that's a two to one slope. So two to one's like fifty percent slope. So our driveway length had to go all the way up the hill, and that's cutting. And then extend into the other property, because we couldn't catch that grade. So, that garage floor elevation is solely dictated by the, uh, fire department design standards.
It kinda reads like it's designed by the fire department, no disrespect, but it's, it's pretty heavy engineering. It doesn't feel like there's anything natural left of this slope.
Yeah, I, I agree.
The whole thing's just blasted away, and it feels like it's engineered by the fire department.
I would say there is a significant cut, but a big part of it for us is to re-vegetate the, um, side of the hill, and basically build it back, so that the house is incorporated in the hillside. So, and I would see, you see it now, it's pretty drastic, but we have gone through conservation. They seemed okay with these types of, uh, of plantings that we're proposing. We're planting new trees, we're doing a lot of native stuff for erosion control on the side of the hill.
Yeah, you're planting ten, not even ten trees, I mean, is that? Is this, is this two different plant schedules here?
So there's a plant schedule for the hundred-foot buffer area, and then there's a plant schedule for the hillside.
So which one is the hillside restoration area or upland?
Restoration would be the, uh, hundred-foot buffer.
Okay.
And then the other one, I think it'd be native species.
You're talking about three, and three canopy trees? So six canopy trees? And some flowering dogwood? So it's not, you know, it's not gonna feel like it's a wooded hillside again anytime soon.
Yeah, it will, it will definitely take time. Our wetland scientist typically calc it out based on area, it's something we can take a look at.
Yeah, that's not much density of planting considering the area. I don't think you could look anymore at denser coverage. To really, and it's a lot of slope to hold, so, um, you know, a lot of this is perennials and ground covers, and they're gonna contribute, but they're not gonna hold the slope like tree roots are gonna hold the slope.
Yeah, so anything outside of three to one that we are not disturbing, we're trying to leave it as-is. And then anything that we are disturbing greater than three to one, we either have retaining wall, slope stability, and then three to one is self, self-sustaining, self-sustaining, excuse me. So all that grading along the sides, other than the areas where we call out for the turf reinforcement, um, that's all three to one, self-staining grading.
Assuming you planted.
Yeah, we see, we, we see the lawn, yeah, exactly.
And so is it indicated what's lawn versus what is wooded in the restoration area? It's a little hard to tell, plant.
It's a little early in the game, we will eventually have some type of landscape architect to take a look at everything. But for right now, that, we just wanted to get account for conservation. And anywhere, everything else is gonna relatively be erosion control, uh, seeding, even long.
I don't know, there's any, if you're gonna have a landscape architect involved, getting involved at this stage, to see if there's anything you could do with a, a more, you know, a gentler drive, perhaps setting the floor elevations at a lower level?
We, the floor elevations were dictated by the hillside and the driveway design standards and the fire department.
Yeah, I can't believe there's only, there's not one level to set a house at or a driveway at, like, there, there are choices you can make, right? So, as I said, there's never only one design option?
Yes.
I understand there's one constraint set by the fire department.
We relocated, we looked at middle of the hillside, um, and so relatively, if you have a twenty-five-foot change in elevation, think about, you lose all that driveway length. So we just have to keep extending the driveway to make up that elevation still. So it'd still have a big loop around, it'd still have to go to the top of the hill, and.
I would tend to agree with Laura, though, there is, there is definitely more than one design solution. This looks, being an engineer, having worked in engineering and architecture for years, decades, this looks like it's really engineered to solve a problem without really thought about the design of how the landscape would look and appear, and the roadway and everything else, so. If there's an opportunity, I suggest you just take a look at it and bring on your landscape architect now to kinda soften the blow of what looks like something that's just gonna look designed by an engineer versus really thought through.
And maybe you can balance the cut and fill a little more and save some money in excavation.
I agree. Yeah, for the site, it's relatively balanced, soil's brought down for the septic area. And then, there's a lot of cutting at the top, so the site is relatively balanced. It's just the, the soil is moved throughout the property, and that's what triggers the special permit, it's just move, earth disturbance, so.
Yeah, no blast?
Um, they're, they have done blasting permits, I believe.
So, there's been blasting already?
Yes, yeah, yeah, they had the mats up there when we did the site walk.
So, but isn't blasting part of the earth removal bylaw? And because of earth removal bylaw, not really, do it before you get the permit, special permit?
From what I've gathered, they've done the permit, but they didn't know that they had significant amount of earth removal or movement to trigger a special permit.
Something for Mark to look into, 'cause I see they, special permit's supposed to come before the blasting, if you're doing earth removal.
Yeah, and then once we realized we had a significant amount of cut in the area, with the design we thought to work, and now we're proposing to the special permit.
You moved the house from its original location further over, down, further over, did that, then?
It's been moved already, Mark, were you just saying? It's been moved already?
So this, this house, the original location was a little.
Is adjacent to the vernal pool buffer?
Over here, oh, exact there.
So, going through conservation, we discussed it, and they did not wanna see any type of impervious area within the vernal pool. It's understandable, so we relocated the house further back into the adjacent property that Mr. Huff owns. And that was for the A&R two weeks ago, where we got the approval for the new property line. Well. But yeah, all of that is, is just dictated by the slope of the hill and the driveway design. 'Cause just to catch that grade at the, for the garage, that's, you just need that length of driveway.
Challenging site.
Yes. Plus you're limited where the septic is at the bottom, it's the best soil testing we got. It's, it is a very challenging site.
But I still don't understand why you can't just lower the elevation of the house and garage, so you don't have to gain so much, you don't have to travel forty, forty-plus feet up. 'Cause you're creating a platform for the house, but there's cut on this side of it.
Yeah, so, on one side of the house, I believe the elevation was seventy-eight. Then on the other, uh, adjacent side of the house, it was ninety-eight, the opposite side. So it's, that's just your crazy two to one slope.
Yeah, that's across the footprint of the building, wow.
So we're basically adding a fill area to level it out, and then just setting the building on it, and then just catching the slope with the turf reinforcement mats and retaining wall. You can only cut so much into the hillside, it's, it's just a strong, it's just a tough site. Any other questions?
There's anything on that scope? There, here.
There, please, go ahead.
Yeah, hi, thank you, Sarah here, tonight from the street. So I'm just a little, um, curious, so you can actually start blasting on a project before getting a permit or going before the planning board?
No, no, you need to go to the planning board before you do any type of blasting.
Oh, I guess I misunderstood what was said, that I thought, I thought I.
This permit is not, excuse me, sorry.
No, go ahead.
This permit is not for the blasting, it's for the change in earth removal, the cut fill. We triggered a few of the, uh, yardage, um, they have bylaws, for lack of a better term. So, once we realized we were moving that much earth, we needed to go back to the planning board and get this approved.
So did you blast before you got a permit, or did you get one from the fire department? I don't understand.
No, we did not blast before we got our blasting permit. This is not a blasting permit, this is a permit for, um, moving more soil material, more material on site.
Okay, I'm just concerned, because it seems like there's so much blasting going on throughout town, especially like Spire Rock, C Street area, that was a tremendous amount of blasting that happened and forever changed that area. I mean, I just also wondered, what is being built back there?
Um, it is, the site we're talking about is a, it's a house for a family.
It's a single-family house?
Yep, the owner owns the property we're discussing, and the adjacent lot, it's his family's house and his, um, hopefully his parents' house.
Oh, wow, okay, alright, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions from the board?
But what is our, we're not making decisions today, or?
We're not making, no, because of the posting issue, we couldn't have the official hearing on the special permit application until March tenth. But at the site walk, um, Sarah had invited, uh, the representative to come tonight to informally go over the project.
So, um, if you would consider bringing your landscape architect on and taking another look at the site, and seeing if there's something that's a little more aesthetic to the, to the neighborhood and the site?
Yeah, it's definitely something we can look into, so you're looking for more relative, like, plantings?
Not like, not just plantings, I'm looking at the grading of the site, and the alignment of the site, and seeing if there's a way, I mean, you're talking about a ten-foot retaining wall, there's a lot of expense and earth removal that is, um, creating a very unnatural-looking condition in the, in the way that the site is graded and that the road is, um, retained. And so, it might be more efficient and possibly better outcome if you were to collaborate with the landscape architect that you bring on board anyhow in the sighting of the house, driveway, and the setting of the finished floor elevation and the grade of the driveway.
Yes, so it's something that we could definitely discuss, but the, for the relative design, it's gonna be all on the civil side. They're not gonna take into account typically the driveway, uh, regs. It's, it's gonna be still more on the civil side. We can collab and determine, like, more plantings and make it more visually appealing. But it's definitely, like, it's a tough site, it, there's gotta be a lot of cut for a feasible driveway in a house.
There's another hand up. Is it Zoom user? Hey, Zoom user.
Adam, excuse me, I'm sorry, Adam Hager. I just wanted to correct the record. I heard that the owner of this C Street property was just referred to, there's been no blasting, um, at that site. I think the planning board is aware of that, but I just wanted to correct that for the record, um, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions from the public on, um, 206, 208 Summer Street? But we'll have the actual hearing, yes, on May tenth.
March.
March tenth, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, it's been pushed off enough. Alright, thank you for coming in.
All set. Sorry, I didn't have anything for you guys.
Is Adam your client?
What's that?
Is Adam your client?
No, he said for C Street, not Summer Street.
Not Summer Street, C Street.
Adam represents, um, the C Street.
Oh, okay. And he's been on building committees with me, that's what I knew.
Yeah, I didn't recognize him.
C Street, what are we talking about?
No, it's, it's C Street.
Sorry, it was, it's mostly listening in, but wanted to correct that record on behalf of this, and him.
Oh, no, he is, he is our project, he just said listening in. Adam, are you still there?
Yes, I am still here.
So you are, you are familiar with the site with Mr. Huff?
If you, I'm, I was commenting on, on, on the C Street site, that Sarah had, had references, had been subject to blasting.
Yeah, we're talking about something totally different. I'm sorry.
That's alright.
I won't hijack your media. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, next up, um, the driveway entrances. Bylaw possible change, Mark, do you? Do you wanna talk a little bit about that, how that came up?
The driveway entrances came up, uh, for a couple of different reasons, um. What is, um, was recently a driveway that was constructed as a loose driveway, was two entrances, and, um, as well as, um, this, um, so questions about whether driveway entrances, the two entrances would be allowed by special permit or not. Bylaw itself says can't have. But later in the bylaw, it says, well, you, planning board can issue special permits for things that are different than in here. But I thought it'd be better just to clarify driveway entrances and just, and, and to allow specifically the, uh, driveway entrances with a special permit from the planning board, so that it specifically allows that. And I also, and then at the end of, uh, of what we have, is I added enforcement section, uh, as well, which mirrors some of the other enforcement sections of the bylaw. And then, uh, I also met with, uh, a fire chief, and there were, um, a couple of things that he felt should be, um, amended in both the bylaw and in our regulation. So, we didn't, because of the short time period, we didn't discuss other changes to the regulations, which are a little more specific about construction standards. But he, but, you know, after we discussed, we should, we should make, perhaps make a couple of other changes to the, um, to the bylaw itself. So for discussion purposes, I put them down in here, and, um, which would be to, he wanted the minimum driveway width increased. Um, he wanted the minimum driveway width increased from eight feet to ten feet. He says, uh, one of his trucks is, uh, his ladder truck is eight foot, six inches wide, so, um, that wouldn't work. Uh, so he wants it to be a minimum of ten feet and, um, you know, if. We have a maximum of twelve feet, but, so we talked about what if someone has, you know, uh, side by side. Um, uh, garages, which are twenty feet roughly wide. Now they can't have an extra wide drive to the street, so, um, and that's not always, since we have a lot of houses in the village and just beyond. Uh, we talked about maybe increasing that twenty feet, um.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that second part about the double wide drive.
Yeah, so if you have side by side garages, generally you, 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 and you have a driveway that goes out to the street. Uh, typically it'd be twenty feet wide.
What is our, um.
Current maximum is twelve, current maximum is twelve.
So we want to change the minimum ten from eight and the maximum from twelve to twenty?
So why didn't he put this on the memo that he sent us? Twenty is really wide, we spent all this time trying to narrow it down. And if you have a double wide garage, you don't back straight out, you back out to the. Where the driveway narrows, so I think we're going backwards on this one.
Well, that's, that's not something that he, his concern has to do with minimum standards, it's not maximum standard, that's correct. So. Um, the other thing is this, um. Driveway entrances, the maximum grade of six percent within twenty-five feet. Um, so that is something that he needs, otherwise his ladder truck bottoms out as it begins to go up. So he can't have a steep grade coming down, has to be six percent and then it can increase, but. They've gotta be able to get the truck in there first.
That was signed by the fire department, fifteen percent.
The prior, yeah.
Skeet on that stuff.
So these are, these are the, the changes that, um. To the bylaw itself.
Is this to be considered for Springtown meeting?
That's correct. So the, the Springtown meeting schedule would be. We discuss stuff tonight as well, this and some, some others if you want, put them all on the agenda. We would do a final discussion on March tenth. We are, as we discussed previously, we scheduled a public hearing. For the associate member and for the two articles related to accessory dwelling units for the tenth. It won't be the official legal public hearing, but it'll be a notice public hearing. Um, so that you can make a final decision on what language to send to the select board. Regarding like numbers of associate members and length of terms. That type of thing, you wanted some input, same thing with the ADUs. You would then vote all the articles after the tenth, at, at the meeting of the tenth. And then, uh, it would go to the select board and, um, they would vote to place it on the warrant at their meeting. A week, uh, a week later, seventeenth. And we would schedule our public hearing for after.
Who's at the sixty days, so we, are we getting it to the select board sixty days before town meeting? About sixty days is February twenty-eighth. That's what KP Law says. Was it sixty days before all town meeting, refer any articles to the Board of Select? Are we meeting those dates?
Uh, I don't know what you're reading from, but we are meeting the, uh, select board's deadline for closing the warrant.
So KP Law, um. Gave us Manchester a town meeting checklist and it goes by the deadline dates and so. For all town meeting, which is different than special town meeting, we have sixty days before all town meeting to get these to FinCom, the select board. Um, for their review.
I don't know whether it's in the statute, so I don't know what they're referring.
It is in our general bylaw.
I'll have to look at that.
So I just wanna make sure we're meeting the appropriate deadline. Well, the select board did at its last meeting, um. Review not the, um, the driveway, but they reviewed the others that we had discussed, the associate members, the special permit. Um, criteria, the introduction change and the two ADU possibilities. They reviewed all of those and gave marked comments on them. Um, but I don't know if that meets that requirement, um. And I don't know if that's a statutory requirement. It, it would only. It is if it's in our general bylaw. But, but we haven't completed the ADU bylaw, so I don't know what they reviewed yet. Well, they reviewed what we had discussed thus far. But not the final. Right. We don't have a final. Right, that's why I'm saying we gotta make, I mean, I think. Obviously, we're not meeting the deadlines if we, we haven't done anything yet with the finals, so, um. But anyway, can I make comments on the. Driveway entrance?
Yep.
Um. So I think it's, it's good to clarify, um, that. If, if somebody wants two openings, that they have to get a special permit, I think that currently isn't clear, um. But I do think if we're gonna change details, other details in the, the bylaw, we should change them all at once and not. Drubs and drabs over, over time, um. And the fire chief gave us very clear, um. Statements of what he wanted to see, and so I don't know why we wouldn't do that all at once. Um, so he recommended the, the minimum width to ten feet, he did not give any maximum and I personally would keep. Twelve foot maximum that we had spent a long time discussing, um. And then he goes into. Grade requirements, um, and the ninety degrees angles intersecting the road, um. And driveway lengths and things like that, so if we're gonna start putting in slopes, six percent, except, you know. We should just, again, do it all at once, what he suggested, um. So I think we need to talk about that, and then the other thing is that when you're adding something to section D, the last paragraph. You have to clarify, it says, um, enforcement is through the mechanism set forth in Article One, Section Four. But then you have to clarify that that's. Section four, section B. But section four, section B doesn't actually give any mechanism for. A fine, a three hundred dollar fine for driveways, so they list out, um. Wetland violations, things, parking violation, things like that, but there's nothing for driveways, so. The way I read it, it just kinda goes into.
That's why I put it in this specific section, cause some of the, some of the. Uh, regulation or bylaws in the general bylaw have the penalty in the section and some, like you said, are listed. In the, that Article One, Section Four under those lists used, so it's done both ways.
But where, are you attempting to put it in Article One, Section Four?
No, I'm saying there's also the enforcement mechanism is in Article One, Section Four. Um, and then here we're putting what penalty.
On the penalty, would it make sense to put all the penalties in one document so that when you update things, update them holistically?
Yeah, yes, I think we talked about that.
But I, that's the detail, but. I know we've discussed our feedback behind. Here for municipalities and I just wanted to hear that, update them, they were all in one doc, or one section.
Well, um, our current, what I'm proposing to remove is, is in the section, which is fifty dollars. A day, so that's why I put it back in the section. But I increased it to three hundred, but there is some of the other section.
So who's the enforcement agent? For driveways?
I think it's, it's commission.
So he has.
I believe so.
Taken on that role? Cause last I spoke with him, he said it was not in his venue.
Okay. The. Several of the other bylaws refer to the enforcement agent, so that, I'll, I'll check on them.
So I think it's just the same question that we've had, um, when we were talking about that school street. Address that, that you sent a letter to, right? Did we hear back from them?
No, I haven't.
Can you send us a copy of that? Um, that, that we were going round and round with the discussion of who's the actual enforcement. Officer for these driveway entrances and. I don't think we've settled that yet.
So I'll talk to Paul, talk to Greg, try and draw. Who the enforcement agent, he also looked through, I'm not as familiar with the general bylaw, but I'll read through it a little bit more and see if I can't. Find a reference.
Great. Yeah, so. Can we as a board discuss that, I. I mean, again, I think it's great to clarify that if it's more than one entrance, it gets a planning board's special permit. But if we're gonna change the minimum width. And the fire chief needs. Certain requirements for, um, his. As he describes, you know, safety access, I don't know why we wouldn't do it all at once.
Well, I think, well, because the other is your planning board regulation, which is what bylaw authorizes you to adopt. That's where you have more of your construction standards. The, these are just a couple of specific things that, um, you already had the minimum width in the, in the bylaw, not the regulation. You know, and you already had. Number of entrances to bylaw, so you already had a few design elements in the bylaw, so I didn't really, um, wanna. Take it out because then you wouldn't have anything unless you subsequently added those to the regulations. Given us short length of time, wanted to give you something. That, um, would be for, for town meeting, where we could amend the bylaw. So and add this one section about the six percent grade because that's kinda something that he always have to have, so. Um, the rest of the regulations, you can work on, meet with him, with, um. And to incorporate the rest of those design elements into, um, adjusting the rest of our.
And I have some more comments, somewhat complimentary, some areas are a little different. Um, on the first point, which is there shall not be more than one apron and curb cut per residential lot, and remove that. We did have a lot of discussion around that and I think that the. Intent, I felt like the intent was to not allow double entrances on a residential lot and so now by. Just taking it out and saying you need a special permit. That implies that, sure, you can have a double driveway entrance, just come and get a special permit, we don't. We need a good reason to disallow a special permit, so if we're giving special permits for, for double curb cuts, it seems to me that there's sort of a. An opening to allow those in a more, um, in a more, uh, a regular way and so I would advocate not. Making it a special permit, but simply clarifying it if we need to save one curb cut per residential lot. If there are already two, maybe those are grandpowdered in, but going forward, one curb cut per lot, if the board agrees that that was the intent. I don't know why we would allow a special permit to serve us, um, one lot. Uh, and then on the dimensional requirements, uh, I would strike the maximum driveway width, I don't think that's related to safety. Um, and I do have a concern with what seems like dimensionally small changes are going to. Have a multiplying effect in terms of, um, areas of paving and potentially impervious or heat island effect or removal of. Um, you know, landscaped areas and so could we, I'm wondering on the, I think we should just strike the maximum change, we should keep the twelve width. The twelve foot width that we originally, um, decided on and in terms of changing from eight to ten. If the current width of the truck is eight foot six and we're just talking about, you know, tire clearance, could we compromise at nine? These are not, you know, these are not buildings that are needing to be circulated all the way around, you have a road in front of the building too. I certainly want to allow safety access, but I'm just wondering, what's the smallest we can neck it down that would serve the fire chief's?
He said ten, he said ten because, well, just for example, previous driveway that you're talking about that goes up the hill.
Yeah.
You know, if, if there's plantings and other stuff like, right there, as the truck turns, it's gonna need room to clear because of the. Park does not keep the way.
So is he wanting it to be ten at the entrance or ten all the way up?
So.
Cause it does.
So a minimum, a minimum of ten all the way up to driveway. He's, he, within the bylaw, he's gonna want us to look at and discuss in here. What we require for, um, uh, radiuses. Right, he's got some standards in there, uh, for turning radiuses, we have something. Uh, he referred to different things, so we're gonna have to figure out what, what's, um, so.
Yeah.
Other things like pillars, like we have to add something in the regulations if we already have something because someone sets a pillar. Right near the entrance, um, and he's not gonna be able to make the. Radius turn with his truck and stuff, so.
So I hear that.
So, so the, these are all things that we would discuss later in adjusting the regulations. These are just a couple of things and I, I, I get keeping the twelve feet.
Yeah.
You know, I get that and clarifying the enforcement, uh, uh, thing, but, um.
So I understand about the eight to ten and why the ten is necessary, however, this is driveway entrances, so we're just talking about what occurs at the road, this is the regulation that. Defines the width of the driveway all the way up, I mean, we spend a lot of time saying that somewhere else. So I just don't think that, other than at the entrance, it just doesn't seem like the driveway width at ten feet all the way up applies to this regulation because it's driveway entrance.
Oh, we, okay.
So wherever that belongs.
So that would have to be in the, our planning board regulations that we pass off to CPD.
Right?
So we should.
We should make that change, but make it in the right place.
Changes, cause we're not very good at updating our documents.
So, so these changes, so my plan was is we would get these changes at our meetings, we fix the bylaw. But then, once, uh, we get a little slowdown, we will then go pull out the regulations. Bear it with what the chief submitted, um, and try and update those, incorporate everything together. But that's something the planning board can do at their leisure, um, but they don't need.
Now, just to be clear, this is a change to the general bylaw and not the zone, not the zoning bylaw?
That's correct.
Well, that really has to go to the select board, not us.
That's correct.
But the select board.
You're the board, I believe, who worked on it, so they're looking for.
They're looking for recommendations from us.
Yes.
So what should we do? So what should we do about the special permit in the two opening?
Or think about that.
So I, not having been part of the original discussion, I think what you, the point you made, Laura, was a good one. And then why open that option? I just think that gives people reason to.
I, I agree in principle, except I'll give you an example of where a double entrance, we gave one. And that was because there was a child living in the house who was, um, paraplegic or something. And the van would come pick her up and the van couldn't come into the driveway.
I remember that case. Yeah, I remember there was also some contention about it because it was not necessary for the van to have a double entrance to back out. They were simply trying to, um, you know, stop the beeping noise from the backup van. And there were, I remember we discussed it as a hardship, we ended up granting that.
Yeah.
I think there were some, it was a favorite of discussion. And then afterwards, there was discussion that some of the, you know, some of the neighbors were opposed to that and, and actually, uh, you know, there were other factors. It, and it was not, there was no functional requirement why you needed a double driveway there. I mean, it was a convenience and it was a hardship in that case, which was certainly, um, you know, there was human story there, but I think that there are functional requirements about backing in and backing out. And if it works for, you know, if it functionally works and we're allowing one curb cut, having two curb cuts has other implications. I mean, it makes it less safe for the pedestrians because you go across that many more curb cuts. It's that much more impervious surface than paving. So I just think it has ramifications. And as soon as you say, we, you can do it with a special permit, well, then you just pay the special permit fee. You come in and you make your case and what grounds do we have to say no if they make a justifiable case for a double driveway?
Well, and especially if we haven't laid out anything in the bylaw that says you have to meet these requirements for the special permit, right? If you just say, oh, you need to come for a special permit, there's no rules behind it.
Yeah.
So with that particular case that you're talking about, that was in front of us, would that potentially fall under the Dover amendment that for those reasons, it would have to go through anyway? So we wouldn't need that in our.
It's not the Dover amendment, but I know what you mean, it's the, um, like the equal access, whatever, yeah. That's a good question.
I don't know, but I, but I think we could adopt, I mean, there are some, some circumstances for some, some places where it wouldn't be a problem having two entrances, so.
Special accommodations.
Yeah, so, and you, so we could write something in, you know, obviously if someone has a larger state lot and wants to have a, a driveway with a couple entrances or have frontage on a couple different roads. There's a private road and there's, let's say, one twenty-seven, they wanted to have access in and then through. Technically, it's two driveways. Um, you know, you could write some, certain standards where, where you would not find that problematic, you know, uh, that they would have to, um, meet in order to obtain. You could put in safety standards, so it might be easy, good to get, as a Kirby Road, allow them to have an access in at a particular location, but site distance coming out may not be very good. So they have a different entrance, so they have a one-way loop exit on another location. So there are some circumstances where you, uh, just because there's another driveway entrance doesn't make it unsafe actually. So, because, no, driveway entrances.
In the case of sight lines, you might just pick the place with better sight lines. We're going to have, still have one instead of two. I mean, it seems like we get into a lot of discussion about what's the criteria to have two and what are the kind of exceptions that we would make for that? And spin ourselves into a lot of discussion around when is it justified? And you can never really, you can't, you can't know the next one in the door, right? And what the reasons might be for it. But I do worry that with a special permit for, for to make it just a little, little less convenient, but still.
So, so in the case that you discussed, Chris, where it sounds like a second driveway was granted, that was granted by the planning board?
Yeah.
So it came in, it just landed here because, because?
Well, that's when they.
That's when we approved all driveways.
Oh, okay, so that, all right, okay.
And in that case, I think the work had already been done and they, and they discovered it and they came back, they came in sort of after the fact.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Yeah.
So where do we leave this? Do we take out what you put in with the special permit or do? We vote? Or, I, I'm sort of on the fence because I look at people who have a very small lot on a very busy road and have difficulty maneuvering, um, on and off a very busy street. But I'm also very sensitive to the too much pavement issue and other safety issues, safety of pedestrians and biker. But, but I'm sort of on the chat. It's a tough one because we did a driveway entrance, um, another half circle, what do you call? So two entrances and we put on the permit that you can't, you have to like go in one way, come out one way. And then, you know, I forget the, the exact streets, but it was like you can't like park and have your cars facing out and zoom out at both ends, right? So we literally put that on the special permit. Well, every time I drive by that driveway, guess where those two cars are, boom, ready to head out on a, I know the streets, I'm just not going to say it, on a busy street, um, for kids walking to school. So now they've got, you know, pretty close by and so I don't think we did the neighborhood any favors. We, we tried to accommodate the applicant and by putting on that, you know, you can't do this. But we know there's no enforcement with that, so it doesn't mean anything. So I guess that's just an example of a, a two entrances driveway gone a little bad.
Yeah, yeah. Every time there's a curb cut across the sidewalk, that's a chance for a pedestrian vehicle conflict. And the more times that you break through with that, um, the more chances there are. I understand it for commercial, for, uh, you know, businesses, all of that makes sense. For institutional, a church, I mean, we had the, um, church that came before us and we had a lot of discussion around the driveway circulation there. But for a house, I think that, um, we live in a village where people back out into the street all the time. It's a traffic calming effect. And I just think the sidewalks and the, you know, the safety of kids and people walking down the sidewalks merits the same kind of consideration as the convenience of pulling out and having two driveways.
Okay. Any other thoughts?
I just wonder if we, if we grant a, a special permit that identifying what the criteria is, if we decide to include criteria, it's really hard.
Right.
We're going to forget something or leave something out, someone's going to contest it and then that's just going to be it.
Well, we can.
I, I would say either we, it's in or it's not. Because trying to come up with a criteria is going to be really.
So we could leave it the way it is, just whatever it sounds like.
Which is confusing, it sounds like.
Clarifying it would be helpful.
Well, it, it currently says you can't have two, so, so it's, it's pretty clear.
Okay.
So what we could do is say, well, let's put in a couple of these other things and we'll revisit that when we have time to, to look at the regulations in that first, uh, part here. And we'll work on them concurrently. So if we then say, okay, we have some clear standards of when it's okay, you know, and, um, so now we'll put the two things forward together and, um, and do it that way. Sometimes it's okay to put things to a quick plan sometimes, it might be a.
I think, I think that's going to be less change to the intent of this law. Newer, making a few adjustments for our department safety, I think, with this, about grades and width of the opening of the driveway. And it really should be about the entrance of the driveway, not the width all the way up. Then let's save the, um, one curb cut or two for the bigger discussion.
Okay, so I'll make that adjustment and, uh, we'll have a final review on the, uh, end.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Is everyone comfortable with that strategy? But, but I do worry about the phrase, when we have time, at your leisure. Because then another law is going to get passed that we have to scramble to comply with, but hopefully not. Okay, um, moving on, um, associate planning board members. So I did go to the select board meeting when they discussed that. And they felt strongly it should be one, not two, um, and one year, correct?
I don't think there was that set on one year or two years, but there were more set on a joint appointment.
Yes.
Um, they were quite clear that they felt that if there's a vacancy, it's done jointly and that they wanted to keep that standard.
What does that mean, Mark, jointly?
Yeah, a planning board.
And planning board.
When you got appointed, there was a joint appointment by the select board.
The appointment, okay, so not sharing one person between. How would you do that?
Volunteers would be working for that.
And it's not that you was constantly before you.
Stop sharing, yeah.
Sort of cross-training.
Um, so we, our, um, intent was to finalize that one for a select, the select board, um, preference and then get public comment on that, um, on the ten.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah.
Be curious to hear public.
Um, well, one of the objections in the past, one is that, um, from the public is they would rather not have an appointment, they would rather elect the, um, associate. I don't even remember other public opinions, but that's just my memory. So site plan review of capability, um, the select board did not have much comment on that, but I recall. I just have a typo on there. Uh, number three, um, any development expansion or? Um, the zoning introduction. Uh, the select board understands that it doesn't need to be in the actual bylaw, but they do want a one pager, um, that would be separate and available. And they also put a one pager on the website. That is my memory of my comments.
Yes, so we will, um, basically put up an information sheet onto the main website on, uh, kind of the procedure, uh, that I'll find, uh, in here. And then other, something else explaining other development, where you can find other development regulations, so.
Um, any comments on that?
Like a good idea, yes.
Uh, except ADUs, um, so we talked about both, um, and they agreed that we need to get public comment as to whether or not residents want to have the discretionary, uh, additional zoning for larger ADUs. Uh, maybe something that people feel strongly we should not have or we should, we should sort of make comment. But realizing that there are already large carriage houses, garage apartments, above large garages, instant carriage houses.
I think there was a proposal that there could be a backup, um, bylaw proposal change that would be withdrawn if this passed.
Oh, regarding the.
Which would simply say that rentals are not allowed.
So I have comments because there was changes, correct? Uh, which one, Mary?
There's a document in.
Yeah, so for both of them, so for the general and the large. So I had, I don't know, um, like go through them?
Yes.
Which one are you starting with, Mary? Um, the general, I guess, I don't know what we're calling it.
Standard.
Standard. Standard. The required. That's what it is. Okay, I'll just go from the top. So number one, and maybe I'm just reading this thing correctly. It says only one accessory dwelling unit shall be permitted on a lot or in a structure. Isn't it that we're only allowing one on a lot, period? Whether it's attached or detached? So I kind of read that too. Yeah.
Where, where is that?
I'm on the, like, last page, nine point one point three. Does anybody else read it like that or is that just me? Actually, I think, isn't that one that Ann pointed out?
Yeah.
Now that I'm listening to Mary.
Yeah, she did point out that it was a little confusing and I, I think I put it in there just to maybe say that you can't have a house with two accessory dwelling units, you're only allowed to have one accessory.
Well, that was very clear what you just said.
So wouldn't you just take out the last or in a structure, just say only one accessory dwelling unit shall be permitted on a lot?
Yeah.
I guess I don't need the structure, just, uh.
That makes it simple, that's clear. Um, so with three, four, and five, what we've done in other areas of the bylaws is we always clarify that they're Massachusetts licensed, um, you know, architect, engineer, whatever. Do we need to clarify that here as well?
Maybe we could put them in our introduction, the general requirement.
I don't think that's necessary. I mean, I've worked on numerous projects where engineers or other people are out of state architects. They're not necessarily Massachusetts.
So I think Massachusetts does require that they, they are in state. Ron was a stickler on this one.
Worked in partnership with him.
I'm just saying we've done it.
What's the intent, what's the intent of having, did Mary, was the, you need a registered architect or a registered engineer to do something?
Registered in Massachusetts.
To do what though?
Um, stamp, stamp the plans.
Stamp the plans for a residential unit?
No, we're talking about ADUs.
For ADUs, right, well.
I'm just saying in other parts of our bylaw, when we say reference.
I'm just saying in other parts of our bylaw, when we say reference an architect or engineer, whatever, we always clarify.
So what I wrote was stamped architectural floor plan shall be submitted for new units. Is there a better way of wording that? And then the next one said exterior architectural plan shall be submitted for any application requiring in addition to any building for habit.
No, architectural drawings are required for residential units in Massachusetts?
No, no, no.
We are requiring.
Well, whether it's an ADU or not, but for anything, a stamped architectural plan, that would seem to be, be, I mean, I've, I've done plans, I've done my own drawings.
I understand. This is a little bit more than what is necessarily required.
Yeah, definitely.
I understand this.
I think they came out of the design guidelines, is that correct?
No, I don't know, I didn't pull it. I just wrote these for this particular thing, thinking people may want to be more precise about that because it is something new. So that's why I put it in. You don't think it needs to be.
Well, if somebody's got to stamp it, it's got to be for the state where you are, where the project is. You have to be registered. I just wondered about whether it's necessary to have a stamped engineering or architectural.
That's up to the board to discuss. I, I put it in there thinking accessory dwelling units by right are new. Therefore, yes, you can do it, but you have to provide a higher level of, you know, submittals in order to ensure that, you know, that you are following them. So you have to submit an architectural floor plan. You have to submit, if you're going to add on to the building, you want to see, you know, architectural drawings, elevation drawing, or want to see an engineered site plan. It, it might be over the top. I mean, that's up to you to discuss.
I guess, I guess you can have it.
I, I, I'm not saying it's not over the top, so.
I don't have my copy of the regulation, but is that something that we require for a single family? Because are we committed by those regulations on the standard, which are the required needs? Are the regulations put a higher level of requirements?
I would bet not.
Well, I think.
Well, if we, whatever we do for a site plan now.
For some things we can, yes, for some things we can't.
Do you remember what it says in the regulation?
We can't do anything more onerous for an ADU than for a single family. But we've already said we can do a site plan review and design guidelines for ADUs. So I don't know if this can then fall under those umbrellas.
I'm not sure we can if we don't require one for a single-family house.
That would be my only hesitation, if we could just figure that out. I apologize. Well, if we are permitted to, is that something that we want to add?
I guess I'd like to understand what the building inspector currently requires for by right builds. Right? So what does he look at when a single-family home is being built?
I bet he does it. There is, there is criteria in this Massachusetts Building Code that says the criteria by which you need a full stamp for mechanical, electrical, plumbing, architectural, whatever it is, and when you don't need it. It's based on the size of the project. That's the world I lived in, because we all did it. We did all commercial projects.
Could we just refer to the Building Code?
You can refer to the Building Code as far as the need for a stamp. Yes, it's very clearly defined in there.
Why don't we just do that?
But you're talking about for the ADUs.
Yeah, I'm talking about, you want to ensure that you have stamped plans for a new.
So what that means, though, Mark, is an architectural designer, not an architect, an architectural designer designs the whole thing, and now we have to go find a stamp, stamp it to prove it's done. Same thing with engineering drawings, too.
Yeah.
Talking about structural engineering.
Yeah, they have to go, well, no, say, you're going to do an addition for an ADU, you're going to do an addition.
Can I suggest, can I suggest, let me do a little, let me do a little research on my end of it?
Okay.
I lived on the high end of it, where we needed everything to be stamped for the, for everything. Now, let me, let me do a little research on it, and I'll let everybody know.
The other question is, do you want to, even if you normally wouldn't need a stamp, do you still want to require? I believe you can do. So that's.
My question for the board. While you're researching, number 13, I think we have an unintentional meaning there that we want a permanent construction, but we're saying we want a permanent foundation. And if you.
All additions to accessory structure shall have a permanent foundation, it may not be temporary. Camping trailers, recreational vehicles.
I understand that. I'm just saying, we're not allowing a temporary structure, but if we say a foundation, or, you know, we're saying how the thing is supported, foundation, pudding, spears, micro piles, whatever, like, can we just, I think we're maybe getting a little too prescriptive there. We want it to be a permanent construction and not.
You didn't say that.
And not, I'm just reacting to the word foundation because I think that has a specific structural meaning that we're not necessarily.
If it does, yeah, if it does, then you're, then you're talking about bearing pressure and everything else associated with a foundation design.
Right. And we might be able to do something that sits a little lighter on the site, but it's still permanent construction attached to a main dwelling or something like.
So my question, my question, just reading that thing, what's the intent? You want it to be a permanent structure based there, correct? Not mounted on a trailer or anything like that?
Well, that's not my sense, but if that's what we want, if that's what we, we don't want a, you know, something that can be wheeled off the site and parked somewhere else. And I'm not, I have no judgment, I'm just saying if that's the goal, then if we were asking permanent construction, I'm just saying not, let's not be prescriptive unintentionally about how that construction is built.
So to be fair, this language was brought from another towns that I thought sounded good, but I'm not married to it by any means. But the, the point being that we should probably ensure, yeah, that we don't have mobile homes as an ADU. So whatever words.
Yeah, it's just the word foundation that I was reacting to.
Maybe a better way to do is to say it can't, it can't be built on a mobile home, or it can't be built, something like that. It's got to be a permanent structure.
Permanent construction, you know, appropriately anchored to the site, or whatever the right engineering terms are, right?
It could be a modular house.
Modular, you could stand it up, right? You don't necessarily need a foundation for that.
What's a different word than foundation? Because foundation you think of as.
I'm not sure.
Foundation, I mean, a foundation is how you anchor buildings to the ground in many different ways. It doesn't, it can be a slab, it can be on tiers. It's not specifying you have to have a basement foundation.
Yeah.
That was why I was asking.
So I think just that.
Let me do the research on.
Thank you.
Maybe it's fine, I just wanted to go.
So, and then for number seven, I thought we had discussed. So we say in six that we don't allow short-term rentals. And then, well, what I thought we were kind of going to try to merge six and seven, but if we keep them separate, I thought we had discussed a lease for a period of not less than one year, but I could be wrong.
Well, I think I originally had something like three or four months, thinking that you may want, let someone do a summer rental, and then find a winter rental. Many people need winter rentals. So then I think we talked about at the meeting, people not wanting to do that, and so they wanted six months. So that's what I put down, six.
I think that is one we need to feed that from residents.
Yeah.
I do think six and seven should be combined.
Couldn't you just strike six? If you say you can't rent it for less than six months, what else do you need to say?
Yeah.
Well, short-term rentals are.
People want clarity on.
Yeah.
I mean, that's such a, even if it's, even if it's redundant, I think.
Okay. Fusion, so maybe we. And then what about number 14, no borders? What does that mean in relation to six and seven? What's a border?
Well, that's a totally different part of our bylaw, right?
So we allow up to four borders in a house, blah, blah, blah. And so we were just saying that ADUs wouldn't be used for borders.
And how is a border different than the part of the renting?
A border rents a room as opposed to a dwelling unit. So with number 12, I just don't think it's, it's clear enough. That shall comply with lot coverage requirements, primary building setbacks, and dimensional requirements. I think we have to. My suggestion would state the actual section in the bylaw that it must, I don't have the exact section here yet, but shall comply with all district dimensional regulations, height regulations, and height regulations for accessory structure.
Oh, for, you mean for the dimensional requirements section? And you just refer to that.
Yeah, so you refer to, not the use table, but you refer to five point four.
Yep.
And then five point five and five point six.
Well, that's different, that's in conflict with 13.
No, you wouldn't refer to five, six, because you want them to comply with, with, you want them to comply with the setback requirements in five, four.
What's that?
With the primary, the same setback requirements as for a primary house?
Yeah, you would, yeah, so that's section five, four.
Okay.
Yeah, and then five, six is just the accessory structures have a different height.
Comply with that, you only want them to comply with five, four.
Well, and five, five.
And five, six.
No, five, six is accessory.
Right, but if it's a detached ADU, that's an accessory structure.
Yeah, but you want that accessory structure, I thought, comply with the primary setback.
No, I'm sorry, yeah, 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 you're right. Where do we say accessory height? Of the. Five point six. Well, this is confusing, because we have five point six defines what the height is, but then it also defines the setback. You see that?
Yeah, we only talked about the height as far as, we didn't talk about the height, we only talked about setback.
I thought we talked about.
They're adding on to the primary dwelling, then the primary dwelling height would be the requirement. If it's an accessory dwelling, let's say they have a two-car garage with a flat roof, and want to build up, build the accessory dwelling, so they have to comply with that. Height.
So how do we get that if it's a detached accessory structure? That it falls within that one and a half story accessory structure line?
Well, if they're adding a second story, they have.
No, detached.
You know, it's a brand-new carriage house, but.
Because my concern is if this is the basis for this and the large ADU, if that goes through, and so we're allowing a large ADU to be pretty large, and somebody could do three stories.
They can do it. It's, it's the same.
Two and a half. Two and a half, which is two and a half, 35 feet. And so with an accessory structure, we say that can be 25 feet. I know.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mary, sorry. That was, that was what I thought we talked about last meeting. I mean, that's my recommendation. I think we were very clear last morning meeting that we want an accessory structure to be accessory in look and feel and everything else. And so we didn't want, you know, a 35-foot house and then a 35-foot ADU next to it.
So if you had a garage, however, in your backyard and put it in an accessory unit above it, it couldn't be one and a half stories, it could be two and a half.
But that's an in-existing structure. I think we kind of have to go into some of these nuances, because if we don't, then we might end up getting things that residents don't want.
That's going to happen anyway.
People don't like ADUs. Well, and that's why, you know, as I look at some other towns with their proposed by right ADU bylaws, and they've, you know, their, their draft is, you know, six pages long, and ours is like a page. I go, we got to beef this up a little bit with requirements, because.
Well, it'd be pretty tough to build a 900-square-foot building on two and a half service.
That's true. I'm talking about if the large went through, because this is also the basis for the large.
Even a 1,500-square-foot house, I guess it could be three stories, but it'd be almost taller than it is wide.
Yeah, but you see it all over the place. If you don't, if you're trying to meet, you know, setbacks, or you don't have the space, whatever, you build up, right? Isn't that the latest thing that they've, for all, you build up? So if you're going to build up, I don't know how accessory that looks.
Right, I, I'm going to listen to Adam here. Oh, hold on. I can hear you.
You're muted.
Thanks. I wanted to weigh in on that, the question that you guys were talking about with regards to architects and stamp lands. Because this is something I've worked on, including in Manchester. In Massachusetts, a single-family or two-family dwelling does not require an architect and stamp lands. Part of the reason that if you started to do that, obviously, you'd love it, you know, the profession, you couldn't use design professionals. In other words, folks who are out there that do this on a, you know, day-in, day-out basis, some of them are even in Manchester, some of them are really good, they appeared before you guys, I'm not going to name any names, but you probably would know, there's a long list of them. So if you guys imposed that requirement to require stamp lands, you essentially disqualified that class of professionals from working on this. My guess is because it's more onerous than, I mean, we're talking about single families with an accessory unit in it, which is effectively a two-family. So you'd be imposing a requirement that was more onerous than what state law allows. I'm not sure we even get approved, but even if it would, I don't think it's a good idea because you've got some really, really talented design professionals that you sort of push out of the pool of people who could work on these, and you drive up the cost for people because they have to go and, you know, get an architect, registered architect, or registered engineer to do it. So I just wanted to weigh in on that because I noticed everybody was going back and forth and trying to give a little perspective. And then the other thing I wanted to just mention, I know everybody's really quick to say, hey, we don't want these to be used for short-term rentals. But I think one of the things that you, as a board, have to really think about here is that we're not like some of these other towns that have, you know, hotel and motel to protect and, and, and make sure you don't want to have these short-term rentals that would lead into that business. We're the opposite. We have no hotel, no motel. And I think that has a really, really significant effect on business downtown. I think we'd like to be able to have more customers, we'd like to have some more vibrancy. If these units are going to get built, I think we ought to be really careful about just throwing blanket restriction on no short-term rentals. Some of the folks who come and rent, you know, short-term, you know, with us have been, you know, great people, great, you know, great additions to the town, they've enjoyed their time here, they've shopped at both stores and restaurants. They've enjoyed their time here. They've shopped at both stores and restaurants. So I think the board ought to think about that really carefully. But, you know, the police in town can do a great job if there's noise and anything that's a problem from these. But I would urge you guys to really, really think about that in the context of Manchester and what we have and what we're sort of looking to do over the long term.
Thank you. You might be in the minority with that view.
I'm, I'm happy to be in the minority, but it's just to be, I'd like to be in the thoughtful minority and, and bring it up to you guys because I really think it's something to consider, the fact that we don't have any kind of hospitality industry to protect. We need to bring in more people to frequent our stores and our shops, keep them open, you know, get everything to be more vibrant than it is today. I would think that, I imagine the majority of town would like it to be a little bit more vibrant and is looking out for the commercial downtown. So I, I really think it's something to think about.
Great, thank you.
So Laura, will you? We're gonna clarify twelve?
Yeah.
Did we get any agreement?
Mm-hmm. And I probably should remove the word stamped and just say. Or plans.
I mean, to that point-
Read the whole thing. Read the whole thing, Laura.
Don't we have design guidelines asking for all this stuff?
Um, no, we don't have, we don't have design guidelines for ADUs. The only thing we would have in here is if they, if they do want to build in a historic district. They have to comply, but that's consistent with the process.
We've got architectural drawings. The number four, do you mean elevations? What is an exterior architectural plan?
Yeah, elevation.
Elevation, so.
So why don't I say the, say elevation plan? And I'll remove the word stamped from the first, from number three.
And these will all be submitted to the building inspector because he's doing these, right?
Yeah.
Yes. I, I want to say in regard, I, I don't think we need to say anything about the Mass Building Code because the building code already says what it governs.
Right.
So we don't need to refer to it. But in the terms of getting stamped, registered, there, there is health, safety, welfare behind that. And so I think that, I'm not saying that we need to require it here, but there's a reason why you get a stamped engineered plan or stamped architectural plan in addition to, you know, a level of professionalism as a design professional. It's also about ensuring that your license for health-
We don't mandate it on residential buildings.
I'm not saying that we should mandate it. I'm just saying that there, there's a, there's something behind the registration. It's not just sort of an ice extract to have. It has to do with public health, safety, and welfare. The clarification.
And for the hearing, the select board asked that I combine the, into one separate section, number six, seven, and fourteen, which are the occupancy-related ones under it, you know, together, just to pull it out, just for clarity, so.
I would also under nine point one point four one clarify and say one off-street parking. Yeah, just put off-street in there.
Oh.
Did we want to say anywhere that the once an ADU has been added at nine hundred square feet? Or larger? That ADU shall not be enlarged except by a special permit. Do we have to clarify that?
I don't think so because it would fall within the the second.
The large, right.
Large one, yes.
Right. And then this will just lapse over to the large one, is that we have nine point one point two here. It just kind of hangs by itself? Don't know what it is.
All accessory dwelling units shall comply with applicable sections of the bylaws.
Because in the large ADU, you say the application applies with the section nine point one-two. Of this, of the, like, so refers to nine point one-two, but really all of the regulations fall in nine point one-three. I'm just not clear what's-
Okay. Then what word? Ah, yes, you're correct. That should be nine point one-three.
Okay. I'm still not clear on nine point one-two, but at least it links to the right.
Give me that to carry over.
And then I just had a couple on large.
Anybody else on the standard?
No, I have something on the large.
Okay, Laura, you start.
Oh, mine is free. It's nine point one point three, number four, that last point, about two off-street parking spaces are required for the large versus one for the small. We had made the example of you might have an existing carriage house or something, so it doesn't imply to me that you necessarily have more drivers in the family or more people. I think we should have the same off-street parking requirements, one and one for both. Again, I worry about the proof of pavement and parking. I know there are differences of opinion, but I'm gonna take my claim here that I would recommend one off-street parking.
I'll support you on that. For the large. So what other folks think about the question?
I, I put two, primarily because you could have three bedrooms easily in fifteen hundred, you have two drivers. You know, so at least two cars, probably. So that's why.
I would agree with that. I, if we're, if this bylaw, which in and of itself, I don't necessarily agree with, but if, if we have a large ADU bylaw, an existing carriage house is a one-off, somebody could go ahead and build a whole new structure that's upwards of how many square feet this comes out to be, and there's gonna be additional cars. So again, it's the nuance of, okay, it might be something existing and, and, you know, mom's living in this house now and she's gonna move to the carriage house, so there's no added cars. But it could also be it's a whole new structure and we're trying to not burden the streets more with off-street parking. And so I say, you know, this isn't the byright. This is a special permit required. I think if it's gonna be as big as, as a house, it should have the same requirement.
So for nine hundred and one square feet, you'd require two cars?
Well, this is where it gets into the nuances, right? I mean, you know, if we want to scale it all up, we could definitely do that, but, you know, you can't. You know, again, you can do the scenario of, oh, it's granny and she doesn't drive, right? Like, so we can all come up with scenarios for, for whatever side we're on. I think if we're trying to do right by the town and be aware of the off-street parking issue, aware that they are gonna come usually with cars, that we address the problem upfront rather than having an issue down.
Well, is it going to prevent someone who has a smaller property of being able to have a little bit larger ADU, having to find space on their property for a car? I worry about that. And then, oh, I do also worry about all the pavement, you know, do we really need that for an ADU? Do we need that as a requirement?
Well, we're adding pavement, so to speak, building the ADU. So I mean, if you want an ADU, you have to accommodate parking. So, you, you know, and I get all that. I'm just stating where, where, and there's different parts of towns that it might be more impactful than others, right? Like the, you know, if, if you're building an ADU on Pine Street and your extra car is, is ending up in the street, that's gonna be more impactful than if you do it on some faraway street that, you know, nobody travels down, right? So if it has to be a blanket bylaw for everywhere in town, my opinion is that we shouldn't further burden the streets with on-street parking if we're allowing an ADU. And our current ADU bylaw does two parking spots, so we're not doing anything that we don't currently do.
But we don't allow any ADUs in practicality anyway.
Well, we have an ADU bylaw.
We have a bylaw, but you can't build an ADU. You, you require a double lot, so you might as well build another house and subdivide your lot. But I think the more important point here is that we're not preventing people from having two parking spaces. If you're gonna build a three-bedroom, fifteen-hundred-square-foot ADU for your son and daughter who are moving in with their children, they're gonna have two cars, so you're gonna have two parking spaces. But if you're building a thousand-square-foot home for your mother who doesn't even drive, why would you need two parking spaces? That makes no sense.
Well, again, it's two scenarios, yes, with two outcomes, but you can't guarantee that for the life of that ADU, it's gonna be one outcome or the other. I'm just trying to solve a problem that we know we have. This idea that there won't be cars is just not real. And so we just have different opinions on it. I'm saying my opinion, I think we, we clearly should. If we're gonna let a large ADU be built, yes, you might more of a chance have one car with nine hundred square feet versus fifteen hundred square feet. I'm just living in reality and saying it's gonna come with two, if you have a fifteen-hundred-square-foot ADU, more than likely, it's gonna come with two cars, and let's try to accommodate that.
But if that happens, it's more than likely they're gonna build two parking spaces when they build it.
Maybe not if we don't require it because-
Well, I think your assumption is that people aren't gonna, they're always gonna go to the maximum.
Maximum?
We have to require the maximum amount of cars, amount of driveway, whatever.
Well, I mean, perhaps, but then you're going to the minimum, so it just doesn't, I mean, we're both just kind of stating what our opinion is.
Well, we, we do have lot coverage requirements. You can't have more than a certain percentage of your lot because it'd pervert your surface.
Yeah, but I don't know what that means, but.
Well.
Well, that limits-
Residents will decide.
They will.
Yeah, they will.
But what do, what would we prefer to have in our proposal? Do we have a preference as board? We want to put one slash two, get opinions, what would we put? I would go with just one, but.
So I'm sorry, I might have missed this. So you're, we're talking about the requirement for both the standard and the large?
No, no, we're only allowed to require one for the standard and zero.
Just talking about the large.
Yeah, yeah, just the large.
Yeah. I, I tend to agree with Mary that we do have an on-street parking issue in, you know, the central part of our town and that, that should be a consideration for why we would require it too.
Or any view?
I'm afraid I'm a bit of a contrarian. The idea of a larger ADU is, I'm just not, I think nine hundred square feet is, is fine with me. Fifteen hundred square feet is a second house. So I, I-
Which is why you need it.
You know, the, the intent is to relieve the, the lack of housing that we have here. And the nine hundred square feet would do that if you, if you open up the gates and make it a fifteen hundred square feet. So I know I'm going off topic.
No, but so you would prefer to not even have a lot.
We should discuss that. I mean, do we want to as a board?
Okay.
Should we discuss that? Do we want to even present a large as a board?
I personally don't. I just think it defeats the purpose of what the ADU is intended to be.
I agree with you.
And then nine hundred is, I'm sorry, so nine hundred is what is required in the state? We're just going with the, what the state language is there.
Right, right.
Yeah. I, there may be times when there's a carriage house or something that is a thousand feet instead of nine hundred. But if we're starting with, this is what the state has defined as an ADU, then let's go with that. Let's not have a large ADU. I mean, that, fifteen hundred, fifteen hundred is a house.
I, my only hesitation with that.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I tend to agree with that, but I also know if you live in area E and you have two acres and you don't have a carriage house yet, maybe you want to build one and have an apartment in it. And so we are foreclosing that as an option for that part of town.
I know we have lots more regulations to plan in the future and, and maybe just starting with the standard, which is as, you know, pretty much as the state has written it. And so there's a solid compelling case, I mean, compelling in the legal form, right? This is why we need to do it.
It's required.
There are also having reasons to do it, but you, with a large, as soon as you open the door to the large, you get into all of that.
We'll be up to twenty-five hundred square feet.
Spaces, why, why here and not there, you know, maybe we just start with the standard.
So I disagree. A nine hundred square feet is a pretty small place to live.
Yeah.
It's not gonna solve our housing.
But it, because it's, it's, it's an accessory dwelling unit. It's not a dwelling unit. It's accessory to what you already have.
Sarah Melish will tell you that what she's getting for applications for people with employee, for employee housing is consistently fifteen hundred square feet and larger.
But then maybe we just keep the employee bylaw because, again, I think there's only been about two of those cases in the last ten years.
I don't think Sarah would say that, but I'm-
Her other cases have been not, well, fake employees.
There have been fake employees.
But, but, but yeah, so. Say with that, but I, I don't know that we write bylaws based on what people are bringing to the zoning board and wanting, right? I mean, that could be, that could be a slippery slope. The I like Laura's idea and Gordon's that, you know, states requiring nine hundred square feet, let's do that. We're also facing the MBTA overlay, which is supposed to do another size housing niche. And I think that might be enough that we've bitten off for three months. And kind of see how things start going with those.
Well, we can, we haven't noticed for a public hearing on the town, so you can make your final decision about whether to-
Do what folks say.
See what people say, what you think, whether you want to, like, put it off, work on it a little bit more, whether you think this is okay for, if there's something else in specific you want added to this. Or if you're gonna do something bigger, or like, let's say, if you're gonna do a third bedroom, then you need a second thing, or if you're gonna go one, one parking space until you hit twelve hundred square, then you need a second one, you know, there, there are ways to do it.
I guess I would like to get Sarah, Sarah Creighton's opinion on the large. So I'd like to keep the large in the mix for now, but I, I understand your points and I support that too.
So can I give you the mic, quick other edits on that then?
Yes.
With the large, I mentioned this last meeting and I don't know, we'll, I guess we'll just have to decide. So I would not have it in D one and D two, which is already two-family.
I actually agree with that.
That's how we currently have it. And then in that grid, I also don't know why G would be a yes and not a ZBA approval. G would be a yes and not a ZBA approval.
Those two families are allowed by law.
But an ADU is different than a two-family.
Not. Not really, because...
An ADU can be detached. A two-family has to be detached firewall.
Good point.
Well, first, how do folks feel about excluding D1 and D2, which is the denser area, area? So we'd be foreclosing a homeowner in D1, D2 from having a large, basically that.
I can see the logic, but on the other hand, the large to me feels like enough of a departure that to start modifying it for some districts and not others. On the one hand, you might say, I'm living in D1 and I'm relieved that my neighbor's not going to build such a big one. On the other one, on the other hand, I might say, well, I live there, I don't have any land, because I'm, so my lot's so small, but I have a garage. It's a thousand, eleven hundred feet, and I'd like to put an apartment on top of it, you know, for my kid who's moving home. And why can't I have it?
Or in my basement.
Or in my basement, or whatever it might be. So I like, I can see, I think it's complicated. I see where you're coming from.
So, so, one, I was taking it just because currently we don't, you know, with our current ADU, which we're going to get rid of, but to your point, I think, again, it's a clarification that you wouldn't want, or maybe you would, but I don't know, a two-family and then an ADU. If you had a s- single family in D and then wanted to do an ADU, perhaps, but not three.
Doesn't, doesn't somewhere else in here say if you have the, you have a multi-family, you don't also have an ADU? Isn't that in the base part of this?
We're trying to, we, we want that included.
That's, that's on number two of the general regulations.
But a multi-family isn't a two-family.
It says accessory dwelling units shall not be permitted on two-family and multi-family properties.
Where are you looking at?
On the, uh, under the standard bylaw.
The standard, okay.
The general regulations.
Yes, okay.
So... So that wouldn't allow, so if you have a legal two-family, you wouldn't be allowed to add accessory dwelling units to those two. So now all of a sudden you've got four units on property. You can't do that.
What number are you?
Yeah, what number, Mark?
Um, nine point one point three, and it's number two.
Yeah.
Okay, um, okay. Um, and then I would just... Um, so nine point one point two-two. I don't know why that wouldn't just default back to the regular one, which we just clarified with five point four, five point five.
The date?
Well, just that they had to meet the setbacks and lot coverage and...
Oh, yeah.
The measures.
Well, they all have to comply with the first one, right?
Well, why this date is April twenty-eighth, because it's not meeting.
But wouldn't this just revert back to the base bylaw? That's already has those requirements that has to lead, lead lot coverage and...
May I ask a clarifying question to what you're asking? Is this large building upon the standards? You have a building upon the standard and then that?
Yeah, you have to comply with both.
I'm not reading that in the large. That you, everything in the standard applies plus this.
That's why the select board limited combined, part of it combined to make that clear.
I see. Okay.
Oh, they want it to be one bylaw?
Well, that's why it says, uh, special permit may be fair about this. CBA provided the application complies with section nine point one-two. It says they shall uh, comply with, maybe I take out nine one two. Yeah, and just say they shall comply with the regulations under nine three, which is the list of...
Nine three, that makes sense.
And then the other thing I had with that was, which we currently have, is with these large ADUs, is owner occupancy in one of the units?
Oh, in the large. Yeah, we're not permitted to have that in the standard, but... Yeah, I...
Yeah, but...
Why not? Is there a reason why not?
What, owner occupancy? Hard to regulate.
I mean, we have no enforcement, but...
That's true.
Yes.
But if a neighbor complained, you know, that LLC in Colorado, you know, is, has two, you know, a house and an ADU and renting out both, and while things are going on, that at least we would have in our bylaws that say, well, you know, one of these have to be owner occupancy.
But it is hard to enforce, and you want to add that for...
And do we really care? What difference does it make who owns it?
Well, because you still want a neighborhood feel of that these aren't just rotating rentals. You know, for the neighbors as well, right? Like that, that they feel that, okay, there's, you know, an ADU that's being rented out or whatever, but...
But then you're...
That there's oversight.
Then you're going to get into, uh, you know, I have family who live on Nantucket year-round, and we're, then we're going to get into the, you know, what if a family goes to Florida for the winter and they can't rent their ADU out? Their larger ADU for a year? It, it just, you...
Well, in our current bylaw, we address that. So again, I would just copy over some of our language that says, you know, you can do minor absences, not for more than six months at a time, or blah, 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 or, yeah, for six months or less or...
I don't know. Thinking about it now, um, I think I would not want that requirement, but bring it up. What others think? On the owner upside in the large on one of the...
Gordon, China, it's over.
Soon as you said large, I'm...
Yeah, and I, you know, again, I, I'm not really backing it either, but last meeting, we had talked about putting the language in that what we currently have, that not exceed thirty-five percent of the floor area, blah, 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 and somehow that translated to half the gross floor area, fifteen hundred square feet. So I don't know where those came from, so I think we're, we made it bigger than we even wanted last meeting. Um, I would change those.
So what?
Doesn't that make this smaller?
Yeah.
It makes it smaller if you, it can't be more than half the gross floor area of fifteen hundred square feet.
Well, I think we had talked twelve hundred square feet and, um...
For the absolute number.
You have a couple hands up.
I don't know, just finish.
No, no.
Because we're on the line.
So I'm sure we have a lot of houses in here that are way more than that, three thousand square feet. Three thousand square foot house would only be able to have fifteen hundred square feet. Half of that floor area is fifteen hundred. So if you have a four thousand square foot house or a six thousand square, twelve, you know, whatever, you can still only have fifteen hundred.
So relatively, three thousand square feet, you know, plenty, plenty, plenty of houses that are that, so having, you know, fifteen hundred, that's large to me as per an ADU. That's large.
Any other thoughts on that? Okay, we'll do the RF, RF.
Yeah, yes, hi, this is Jennifer Daygloss in Lang. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, good evening, guys. Um, I just want to just, just a quick thing. I, I like the nine hundred square feet, um, with an ADU, because my definition of an ADU is a very small residential space, and for me, I, I'm always thinking between four hundred and eight hundred square feet to accommodate one or two people with a single bedroom, bathroom, kitchen. And, you know, I lived in an apartment with my husband that was nine hundred, it was square feet, and it was huge in Chicago. My in-laws lived in an apartment in Salem, nine hundred square feet, huge, and you could even have, you know, a child or so. When I think of fifteen hundred square feet, and let's say I even just add six hundred onto my apartment in Chicago, it would have been massive. We had so much space for a couple of two. I just really would be mindful of, like, why were, like, why would you need a, I mean, a fifteen hundred square foot is a really nice-sized home. Like, let's, let's be honest. Like, I mean, fifteen hundred square feet is pretty big. So I just would be mindful about, I think we just start with that nine hundred square feet. Let's get those ADUs under our belt. Like, let, let, let's allow the elderly, let's allow like a small family, a couple with a child, you know, and the child to, to kind of get into here. Before we start really expanding to like what would be a home, an actual fifteen hundred square foot home. So that's, I, I, I like the nine hundred square feet. I hope you guys kind of stick to that. Yeah, I do understand if you already have an existing structure, like a garage or even a basement, and your square footage in the basement would be a thousand or above. I guess I wouldn't mind if that was to stay the same, because the structure and kind of the footprint doesn't change, but fifteen hundred square feet to me seems pretty large. That's my comment. Thank you very much. You guys are doing a great job.
Thank you.
I think that's, that, that's interesting that, you know, if there was an existing structure, that part of it wanted to be converted or the whole thing to an ADU, that's different than creating a whole new fifteen hundred square foot structure. So maybe something like that could be a special permit that, you know, you have a, an existing garage, structure, whatever, that you now want to convert to an thousand-square-foot ADU. You're repurposing an existing building. I guess I could see that better than a new structure.
And you'd, you'd address that particular problem at time that it's submitted?
Well, yeah, you would just tag on to the, the general ADU bylaw that, um, you know, it takes some time to figure out the wording, because you wouldn't want somebody to convert a garage and then get rid of their parking spots, so, um, but, you know...
But people could do that now, I mean, well...
Yeah, and that's why, you know, I don't know, we, we shouldn't be adding to a problem that we already have.
Any other thoughts? All right, we're on, done with large. On to floodplain. You want to update us on the status of floodplain?
Uh, floodplain is, um, pretty much, I believe it was unchanged, um, at the select board meeting, um...
But we're, we still have the map problem. Correct.
So the map problem is being promised that we will be all set with map, final map, by the, uh, by our meeting in March.
Wow.
It's not sooner.
So the one comment that the select board had on this was they wanted to have Mark have a discussion with town council about whether or not the floodplain bylaw could be structured in the same way as the stormwater bylaw was structured.
I, yeah. I tried to explain that the, the, this is the outline, saying what the zones are and what the overall parameters are, but the building code is the regulation that this applies to, because the building code dictates how you build in floodplains based on type of floodplain you're in. So, um, I have called the state floodplain coordinator to ensure that that is correct, so, they're the ones, they're the ones who are saying we have to adopt it in this format.
In that format.
That's correct, so, um, otherwise we're not compliant, and then people get flood insurance, so...
Yeah, this, this model bylaw is for the state. Like, did they want to change the, just the format?
They asked the question, the select board asked the question that could they, because apparently when they did the stormwater, the stormwater was one, one document when the state sent it, but then they said you could split it into, you could take out all the regulatory, uh, requirements and make it in your local regulations and just have the format, structure as bylaw. And so they let them do that this way, in that, in not sure why, I wasn't part of the whole floodplain, I mean, the stormwater discussion. That was all on public works. So, um, so they just wanted me to check, but, um, my understanding is that...
We have to go with what the state is.
We have to go with what the state says. I'm just confirming that that's the case, and that, yeah. Near that, if we would, the regulations, so to speak, would be the and that it's already separate.
Okay. Any comments on floodplain? I know. Okay, Bill Stone.
Hi, um, my comment is not about floodplains, forgive me. Um, I just got back from the kids' day, you know, school break, and got a notice tonight about Thirty Mill Street. And I was, uh, I guess you must have uncovered it earlier in the meeting. Uh, was there anything voted on for that?
Thirty Mill Street? Maybe you have, maybe it's a different meeting.
Yes, that, is that a conservation notice?
Yes.
Oh, that's tomorrow night.
Oh, sorry, guys.
It must be on a different time zone.
Thank you, thank you, sorry, I just got the notice. You're only about a half hour after your call, it's just starting, so I was waiting to see if it came on. Thank you.
I'm sorry you had to wait all night for that.
No, I've got to leave. You guys are doing great. I just sat here going, oh, they're just trying to think of all the different things that affect everything, so thanks, you know what you're doing.
Oh, thank you. All right, any other hands, Mary?
No.
Okay, anything, oh, um,
dropping like glass.
Liaison reports. Anything important to report?
I would say that the downtown improvement committee is quite, uh...
Active, engaged?
Quite engaged and quite active. They're, they're rather boisterous meetings. I mean, they get to the point of, like, burning torches and charging up the hill. But they're, but they, they are tremendous advocates for betterment of the town. Getting bathrooms in here, getting the commuting center up and, you're getting signage in the town. And, and lastly, is trying to improve the whole retail environment that we all throw down to. Those discussions are really quite, quite fertile and quite active. I happen to be taking the notes from them too, so I'm... So I've, I get to read, I get to hear it all over again. It's pretty, it's pretty amazing. And they, they are great advocates for, for us too. I, I do hope. I have expressed this to Sarah many times to help that we, where they, with them, which is also me on that side of the equation too here, because they're, they're great. They're great. They're funny. They're passionate.
Great.
Sounds like Gar's been there.
Well, Gar, it's, it's actually Marlene Stone. She's really, she's, she, she gets to the point to swear, and we have to, like, her tail is to bleep it out of the tape. It's pretty passionate. But she's right, you know? She, she wants, she wants something that's for the betterment of town. You get lingers and lingers and lingers, and nothing gets done.
Yeah.
She wants it. Okay, enough, please, sorry.
Well, that was great.
Thank you.
Well, that was great. Thank you.
For what having trust, we have a survey done on Newport Park, which people can look at, I guess. It shows a little more difficulty in developing the part of the land, but it's still possible. We're also having a survey done in the plains to see what the constraints we have there. And we've been discussing a potential transaction with our current property owner in partnership with a nonprofit corporation. If we can all get that put together, that'd be great. The Powderhouse Lane Lip application has gone into the state finally?
Yes, and it's under review and they haven't asked for any more information, which is amazing.
How many units is that? Eight?
It would be, no, it would be the entire development because twenty-five percent, if reviewed and okayed, twenty-five percent of the units are already rented in accordance with the requirements.
And that's the property at the end of M?
Yes. So all twenty-nine units would then go on to the
And there are only eight that are on it currently?
Well, no, there's zero in it currently.
What does that do to our percentage?
Helps a little bit.
I haven't done the math, but it's not, it's not very much. But it's a good step. That's right.
Any other public comment on anything that we've covered tonight? It's not anything.
I have two topics.
Can we do the minutes first?
I didn't see any minutes.
I didn't either.
Yeah, I didn't either.
If they weren't in the online packet, then they probably weren't there.
Okay, oh, Sarah Pierce, okay. Then Mary.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, Sarah Pierce and my friend's tweet. I just wondered, when would it be an appropriate time to ask to go back to the thirty and I believe thirty-four Pine Street? With the amount of lots separated or combined, what is the maximum amount of units that could be built there?
Well, in my view, it depends on what we could take it from what he poses. Which, I mean, he goes under. He was sort of flopping back and forth between different
So, um, the way, when we adopted that amendment on the floor at town meeting, it's, it limits it to even if he divides it into multiple lots, the most he could do with the existing two lots. So I believe he could get five units on each of the existing two parcels, which means in thirty and thirty-four combined, he could do ten. But right now, he was trying to divide three single family homes in the front, three small lots and one bigger lot in the back. But it's still, even if he divided it into those four parcels, the most he could put on the properties combined would be ten units.
Okay, and so would that require two out of the ten to be affordable?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good question, though.
You're not building five.
Okay, Mary.
Five.
Five.
Other matters. Mary's bringing up other matters.
So we did a special permit last meeting and for Seven Central. And something was bothering me. I went home and looked on the map. We approved off-street parking behind Seven Central. The issue is, is the, the road right behind Seven Central is town owned, which is fine, but to get there is a right-of-way owned by Nineteen Central. So we need to verify that Seven Central has an easement from Nineteen Central in order to approve off-street parking. So in order for us to approve off-street parking, if somebody has a common driveway or a shared road, we need to make sure that they have an easement that is deeded at Salem Deeds. So that was not in our packet. I quickly looked at Salem Deeds. I'm no expert on there. There's no deed for that. So we need to, I don't know. Mark, if you have that easement, we need to review that just so that our decision was correct, or we're gonna have to revisit the off-street park.
I think Greg weighed in on this.
Um, yeah.
Greg, are you there?
Oh, we're not in the meeting.
And I think I forwarded you at the end of the day is emails?
He forwarded some, no.
Or maybe you replied to him, Mary?
Oh, yeah, that's what I said.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that, behind Seven Central is town owned, but getting to Seven Central from that right-of-way that they must access off of Central Street is owned by Nineteen Central?
Because it's town.
No, so if you look at the two maps, so this is Seven Central right here. This is supposed to be the meeting packet.
No, it's okay.
This is Seven Central and this is Townland and this is a right-of-way owned by Nineteen Central. So if somebody owns the way, we have to verify that they have an easement to go across that to get to there. So we need
Which one's nineteen? Oh, okay. Does it, he own that property too?
Yeah.
The Seven Central owner owns this. That's the, that's the apartment building, isn't it?
That's where like Style Snoop and that hairdresser is.
I can't find Greg.
Well, it's
It's a different owner.
Right, it is a different owner, okay.
I want to hear from Greg though, because he spoke with town council.
Yeah, he spoke with town council.
And I can't find it.
You don't have a forwarded email for me yet? No, no, three? Of four.
So is there any reason Greg wouldn't send that to me since I asked him the question?
I thought he
He sent it to Sarah Creighton and Mark. I talked to town council about a couple of other items. Mentioned Mary Foley's issue about access to the rear going across town property.
Not town.
There is no reconsidering an approval to a site plan. Once approved, it is out of the hands of the planning board. The building inspector could hold off issuing a building permit if felt that the question of access was unsure. However, the access over the land has been happening for decades, probably longer. The property owners could claim prescriptive rights if an easement does not already exist. The select board could also grant a license to use, granting a new formal easement would require town meeting approval. So there's nothing for the planning board.
So, okay, so, but, you know, it concerns me that it was misrepresented at a public hearing. They said they owned the land and they don't. And I think it would be professional, good gesture to, the town to reach out to Nineteen Central and say, is that okay? For residents to be traversing your land to park? I think currently I don't know if Seven Central used it, you know, or maybe the owner went and parked back there, but there weren't people going in and out. People aren't living there currently. In my opinion, as a planning board member, I think we've done a great disservice by not having a correct application and now allowing somebody to use somebody else's land that that landowner has not given consent. And he may very well, or she may very well say, it's great, I don't care, but I sure wouldn't want my land used without my permission. So you know, it's off the planning board's plate, it's off the plate, but I, I will personally pursue it because I just think it's wrong on all sorts of levels. I don't know why we didn't have correct information.
Any other comments?
I don't disagree with that. I don't know what are remedies. We don't have a remedy in our place. It would be nice if there was remedy. It's just an acknowledgement. Discussion between the two parties.
Yeah, I mean, I
What would you propose?
I don't just I don't just I don't know. I don't know what I propose. It's a, it's a sticky, sticky situation.
Communication with the designer of that space that we talk to, would he not be a logical choice? Do you have access? Do you have permitted access to your back of your building?
FYI.
Could be a simple question. Who asked that question?
I think it, you know, and again, it's probably all friendly and all great, but, you know, if, if the owner of Nineteen says, you know what, no, I want you using my private right-of-way, right? And, and then they have no parking, right? So then what do we do?
Well, the practical application, practical solution here is just contacting the person and ask them, is that, is that our role? I'm guessing not. I guess not. But it's, to your point though, we, we said, yes, you could use it when in fact
You were given false information.
You don't even know if it can.
Well, we don't know whether it's false information.
Well, we do because he said that he owned it.
Well, he may well. We know, we know, we're not the we're not the deed register.
Well, I looked on the registry of deeds and he doesn't own it. So I would think the registry of deeds was up to date. And then the other thing was that the obvious that we've got the emails and that has been on social media, blah, 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 is that the with the three A being an unfunded mandate and it's probably not in the planning board purview, but maybe we as a board, go to the select board and request that they submit to the DLM for the assessment of the unfunded for Manchester. I don't know if the town has to automatically request it or if a town has to request it or it automatically is going to happen now that they have to assess the hundred and seventy-seven feet.
Though I do think that's out of the planning board's purview. I think it's up to the select board. And I don't think they'll be interested in our, in our recommendation. But if they ask us for one, then this is just my recommendation. If they ask us for a recommendation, then we can address that.
Well, I think since we're the board that brought the bylaw to the town.
But we didn't pass the law. The law is the source of the unfunded.
Except, except it wasn't unfunded. You received a grant of fifty thousand dollars. And so your claim, your claim of it being unfunded as most of the communities did receive, they were handing out money to communities that you made the applications through a variety of sources, EO, HLC, and several of the other training agencies such that, I mean, there may be some towns that did do it on their own without any state funding, but we used
But again, I think that's up to the select board.
And you, you think that they're gonna do nothing?
I have no idea.
Oh, I thought you said they
No, 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 I have no idea.
You don't want to hear from us.
I think you don't want to hear from us.
They might ask for a recommendation, but but it's like a town budget. Anything else?
You did a great job.
Yeah, you did very good. I would have liked your nice meeting.
Salute.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.